I'm going to call to order the Concord City Council meeting of Monday, April 14th, 2025. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Mayor Champlin.
Present.
Counselor Fennessy.
Present.
Counselor.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Forn.
Present.
Counselor Keach.
Counselor Keach will be late.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Kurtz.
Here.
Counselor McGlothlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Schlosser.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Seku.
She will be late.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the March 10th City Council meeting. Seconded. Any discussion? All right. I'll just make one correction, Madam Clerk, that it's St. Patty's Day with D's not T's.
I have a question now.
All right. Well, as a proud, as a proud stepson of Ireland, I just want to make sure we had that right. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. I would just like to mention that for those who have challenges hearing, there are hearing devices available in the room. They are a transmitter and headphones that allow an individual to get a direct feed of the sound of tonight's meeting, and they can be obtained in the back of the room at the Concord TV booth. If you need that facility, please go ahead. I'd also like to take a moment during our agenda overview to recognize and ask them to stand the Concord General Services Propel Program class. Please stand, all of you. Propel is a leadership development program that General Services has been running for, is it two years, Chip? Two years. It's a great, a great program. So, we welcome all of you. It's good to have you at this meeting. I now will turn to the consent agenda. Nothing has been withdrawn from the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Counselor Brown.
Yes, I am recusing myself from item number 22 because my husband is a police officer.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Kurtz did make the motion?
No, Counselor.
I'm sorry. Counselor Grady Sexton and you seconded. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 32A.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $84,000 to support efforts by Concord's plan to end homelessness and authorizing a transfer in from the Community Improvement Reserve in the amount of $84,000.
Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, working with Counselor Schlosser, he asked to put together a report and a funding resolution, and you have those before you tonight.
Okay. Any questions for the City Manager? Our hearing done. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to testify? Seeing none, I'll declare the public meeting closed. Madam City Clerk, item 32B.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $11,500 in the Parks and Recreation Miscellaneous Grants and Donations Project for the Free Summer Concert Series and accepting the sum of $11,500 as a donation from the Walker Lecture Series for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, since 2022, the Walker Lecture Series has continued to fund the Thursday night and Sunday morning free community concerts. Last year, their donation was $9,500. With the New Riverfront Park in Pennacook opening this spring, we approached the Walker Lecture Series to see if they would fund the expansion of our summer concerts, requested $2,000 for the new concerts at Pennacook, and they've agreed, and that funding is before you tonight for action.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 32B? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 32C.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,000 in the Annual Highway Improvement Program for pavement repairs and accepting the sum of $10,000 from Main Street American Insurance for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
And members of the council, I'd just like to add that the pavement repairs would be for Elm Street.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this item for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 32C? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing on item 32C closed. Madam Clerk, item 32D.
It's a resolution modifying the all-veterans tax credit for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA 7227A.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, you'll notice that this report is also applicable to the next two agenda items. And very briefly, presently, the asset level for the elderly grouping for both single and married applicants is $150,000, not including the value of the applicant's primary residence. The current income thresholds are single $42,000 and married $60,000. The exemption amounts are age 65 to 74 is $80,000, age 75 to 79 is $131,000, and ages 80 and older is $223,000. The Tax Exemption Policy Committee recommended to increase the income levels from $42,000 to $44,100 for single applicants and from $60,000 to $63,000 for married applicants, and no other changes were recommended. Would you like me to go through all of them, or do you want to?
Yes. In fact, if the council has no objection, I think we'll have a public hearing on all three of these at the same time because they all deal with the same issue. Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Next item is a resolution modifying the elderly exemption for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA 7227A. And then there's a resolution modifying the optional veterans' tax credit for the City of Concord.
Thank you.
So, I'll just continue. The Tax Exemption Policy Committee recommended increasing the optional veterans' credit and the all-veterans' credit, tax credit, from $300 to $400. That would apply to both of them. You have separate resolutions for each one of those three items.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager on these three items? Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, in looking at the comparisons from town to town, specifically the one for the veteran tax credit, I noticed that ours was substantially lower than other, the other communities. And while the recommendation has increased this tax credit to $400, can you give me a sense of why we stopped at 400 and didn't go higher? Looks like Counselor Fennessy would like to answer.
I'd be happy to answer that. So, we started this process last year. I think we were at 200 last year. We went up to 300 last year. This year, we're recommending going up to 400 with the goal that next year, we might move up to 500. And that was based on the recommendation. We talked last year about potentially going from 200 to 500, and the, the recommendation we got from staff was to just step it up over time because we recognized that we were below surrounding communities. So, I think the committee has, we'll see who's here next year, but the thought process was doing it over time to get to that $500 number.
Thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Any other questions? I think it's worthwhile noting, I think that you touched on this, but that a tax credit act is actually a dollar amount that's subtracted from your taxes due, as opposed from the value of your property, which is what the exemption is. All right. Thank you. I'll know if there are no other questions. I'll open those three items for public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on items 32D, E, or F? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and that moves us to public hearing action. Item 33. Madam City Clerk?
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $84,000 to support efforts by Concord's plan to end homelessness and authorizing the transfer in from the Community Improvement Reserve and the sum of $84,000 for this purpose.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Schlosser.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would like to move to table this motion, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you. And I really want to thank everybody in the council for support, for supporting this work. Last year, the Steering Committee for Homeless, the Committee for Concord's Plan to End Homelessness convened city leaders and others and identified five priority aims aligned with the city council's priority on homelessness. The city council approved a priority that included plans to coordinate and require measurable progress in this effort by unifying our community's activities around a shared goal of reducing homelessness. So, we really need to unify all the activities, convening key organizations and departments to streamline homelessness, and we intend to map county, regional, state responses to homeless and aligning those with the Concord's plan. A key element also is maintaining a comprehensive real-time-by-name list of all those experiencing homelessness. This work is being coordinated by the steering committee. So, we convened city leaders, community leaders and others, and identified five priority aims to work on this. With these aims, we intend to organize working groups to focus, to achieve measurable progress on those aims. This requires both coordinated action by the steering committee and project management. And this appropriation that was suggested in this resolution is to fund, at least in part, a project manager. So, a project manager to help coordinate the working groups is a key piece of this. The other intention of the steering committee is to survey, solicit input from the community by getting, listening sessions so that we get additional input from the community on the interests and values of a broad section of stakeholders in the community for ending homelessness. So, the project manager, listening sessions, and the other element of our budget is to convene quarterly learning sessions so that the people working on this who are both in the steering committee, our nonprofits, the city, other folks working on these efforts, can come together quarterly and share lessons learned in their efforts. And annually, we would convene everyone into a homeless summit to both assess progress, measurable progress in this effort, and celebrate successes. So, our budget over two years is about $220,000, which is for the project manager over two years, these listening sessions, and the quarterly learning sessions and the annual summit. The, we have been fundraising for this effort, and I really want to notice the mayor, who's really helped us substantially by soliciting private donations to help support some of this work. Over the past weekend, we've received new news that there's a possibility of an additional substantial funding from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. So, with that news over the weekend, I think at this time, it would make sense to table this motion at this time, continue our fundraising efforts, and then in the future, see what support from the city may be necessary. I think it's critical to understand that this effort is an all-in effort, public-private partnership, each according to their role, each according to their means. So, we've talked to the Chamber of Commerce, we've talked to the nonprofits, the foundations, the faith communities, and the city, everybody in collaborating on this effort. And so, I just want to appreciate the work of all those agencies and partners, and I think fundraising efforts to date have been successful. We can hold off on this city appropriation at this time, and hopefully, very soon, we will succeed in our initial fundraising and be able to hire a project manager and really accelerate the work of the steering committee.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd just also like to mention the strong support of the Granite United Way, which has, which has offered to be a fiscal agent for the program and assist with fundraising and recruit and, and house the, the program manager.
Thank you for mentioning that.
For which we're deeply grateful. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The resolution passes, or the motion passes, passes. Madam City Clerk, item 34.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $11,500 in the Parks and Recreation Miscellaneous Grants and Donations Project for the Free Summer Concert Series and accepting the sum of $11,500 as a donation from the Walker Lecture Series for this program.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would just like to say we deeply appreciate the ongoing support of the Walker Foundation, and I think it's great that we're going to be extending the free concert series out to Pennacook, taking advantage of the new, the new Canal Street and the Riverfront Park, which is a great venue for that. So, I'm looking forward to being out there for at least one of the concerts. All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 35.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,000 in the Annual Highway Improvement Program Project for pavement repairs and accepting the sum of $10,000 from Main Street American Insurance for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. I'm going to be recusing myself on this as I represent a subsidiary of Main Street American Insurance.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item number 36.
It is a resolution modifying the all-veterans' tax credit for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA 7227A.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Your Honor, I will be recusing myself from this as I am a veteran.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. I just want to say once again, thank you to the Tax Exemption Policy Committee as well as the staff support we got from John Rice. We looked at these. There's a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of trying to figure out how best to do this and strike a balance between making sure that we look out for some of the elderly members of the community, as well as our veterans, and make sure that we are sort of keeping up with what's appropriate in the larger community, while at the same time, making sure that we don't go too far in a direction that we unnecessarily burden other taxpayers. So, I want to thank the committee again for working on this, and I hope you will support each of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
Your Honor, thank you. I'm recusing myself from both of these, all three of these resolutions as a result of the 39 solar panels I have at my house. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item number 37.
It's a resolution modifying the elderly exemption for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA 7227A.
Motion?
Approval.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
I just want to express gratefulness because I heard from constituents who are, who are applying because of this. Now, they, you know, they can qualify, and they had called me earlier, upset, concerned, so this allows them to apply for it.
Super.
So, I'm thrilled. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item number 38.
It is a resolution modifying the optional veterans' tax credit for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA 7227A.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I am still a veteran, so I will recuse myself from this as well.
All right. Thank you. Any, any other discussion? We already have one from Counselor Kretovic. All right? Okay. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion passes. This brings us to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Members of the council, you have a report in front of you regarding the Bridge Deck feasibility study. You have the study. The consultants are not going to be able to be here until next month, so we're just going to slide this till next month. You'll get a full presentation. Because in case you have questions, it'd be best going to the consultants who actually worked on the project. So.
Super. Thank you.
I'll just add that to next month's agenda.
All right. Everyone understands that. We'll just have the presentation and the report next month. All right. Thank you. This brings us to consideration of suspense items. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules to take up this item?
Still moved?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right. Ayes have it. Motion passes. I'll entertain, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, suspense one is a report from the city solicitor's office regarding referral of Board of Ethics complaint to city council.
I'll entertain a motion to refer this back to the Board of Ethics with instructions to meet as soon as a quorum can be convened to address the complaint.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'm grateful that this is going back to the Ethics Committee because I do feel that the members of the golf advisory committee do have a number of benefits that have been growing since the time that the committee was first expanded to have six general public representatives. So, I'm glad that they will be looking at that. I do feel that we are partially to blame because we appoint and nominate people to these committees. So, I would like to see, and I'm not sure if this is something that would be decided by the Ethics Board, that there might be clearer language that the general public representative is a non-golfer because there are two roles that are identified as both a golfer and a seasoned member. So, I would just like to say that, you know, I hope we have a more clear language going forward.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor.
Counselor Fennessy was first.
I was just going to say on the point that Counselor Brown was making, I don't think that's really in the purview of the Ethics Committee. I think if the council wants to change the positions on any advisory committee, that's in our purview, and we can certainly do that at any point.
Counselor, did you?
Your Honor, this is uncharted territory, and the ethics complaint is against me. Am I allowed to speak on this?
I'm going to rule that you are.
Thank you. I have concerns in general about the complaint. The middle name of the golf advisory board is advisory. They have absolutely no authority to set any rates or anything in regards to the golf course. They are there to oversee recommendations by city staff and make recommendations to the council. Counselor Brown said that we're partially to blame. The council is wholly to blame for who is appointed to that board. I would have hoped that tonight, if anything, you would have let our good volunteers who raised their hand and said, "I would like to serve the city." Let them go. Release them. As a city councilor, if you have concerns because I also golf, which has been known for over 25 years, and I am voted to this position, and it is the largest municipal operation in War III, if you have concerns about that, let that go back to ethics for them to review. But that's not what the complaint says. The complaint says that we made a recommendation in regards to the golf course clubhouse that came before that board, that we supported a specific recommendation. That board, the golf advisory board, is targeted, targeted specifically because should there have been any concern about what the ordinance said and who should serve and who shouldn't and who might have some sort of preferential treatment, we would not have a realtor sitting on the zoning board. We would not have planners, engineers, architects, serving on other boards related to architectural design review, the planning board. How about people that drink water? How about people that have garbage service? How about people with leaf pickup? How about people with library cards? What you're saying is that if a resident participates wholly in our community, they don't deserve to participate in our fundamental right of a democracy government that is set up of the people, by the people, for the people. If you want to split hairs over this, this is a discourse and a disagreement about the golf course clubhouse and an effort to undermine that going forward. The only reason the golf advisory board was asked to weigh in on this was because they oversee the golf obligation fund, and the golf obligation bonds come from the operations of the golf course. There was a whole other committee set up and designed to talk about the clubhouse, to do the public review, to take all of the public input and put together their recommendations, which then went to the golf advisory board and FPAC. Why is FPAC not also included in this complaint? It's because we're targeted. The way civil discourse works is that it's a civil conversation where we walk away sometimes knowing that we disagree, but at the same time, we try to come to consensus. There was no effort here to try and build consensus on anything. This is about ripping out this project before it ever even comes to this council, and that to me is unfair to the good, kind volunteers that serve on every committee within our city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Are we ready for a vote?
Your Honor.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. I would just like to point out, when the golf advisory committee was expanded in 20, in 2008, there was a mission statement that they changed, and the language that they had removed had to do with fiscal responsibility. I will read the language that was removed by the golf advisory committee. "The course must be operated in a businesslike manner so that all yearly operating expenses, including present and future capital improvements, are met without the need to supplement revenues with tax dollars. Alternative income sources should be continually explored to supplement current revenue sources." That language was removed. I would like to see that language brought back.
Counselor, could you speak to the motion?
Yes. The motion is this going back to the Ethics Board. As Counselor Fennessy pointed out, it is within our purview to address something like this, not the Ethics Board. So, I'm saying that I would like to see fiscal responsibility language back into mission.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Any further? I'll be order, please. Please, no expressions of approval or disapproval. All right. Are we ready for a vote? I'm sorry. Counselor Horn.
As Counselor Fennessy stated, it's something that, just the appointment process is something that we can discuss. When would we be able to discuss that? I know it's not during this motion. Is it something we can take up after that, or?
It's not an item that's on the agenda, Counselor. Let's discuss that separately and see what we can do about.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Ayes have it. All right. This brings us to comments. Counselor Todd?
Any comments to that? You're reading my mind that I have a comment.
I have.
Well, I just, I'm really echoing part of what you had said earlier about the concert series. I just want to say that I'm very excited and looking forward to what will happen in the new Canal Street Riverfront Park. Very pleased that Mr. Gill has arranged for additional funding so that we can have some extra activities there, and I'm also looking forward to the official grand opening of the park, which I think we are anticipating sometime in June or July of this year. So, we'll get some more information on that coming forward shortly, and I'll be sure to let all folks know what the activities are and the other things that are planned for the park. So, again, thanks, my thanks to David Gill and everyone for really focusing on the community of Pennecook and these kinds of activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Horn.
We are still hiring for lifeguards and water safety instructors. You can apply online at concordnewhampshire.gov. You do need to be 15. If you work full-time all summer, you can make $5,500, and if we want to keep our pools and splash pad open, if people can please apply. You don't have to be a teenager. Adults are definitely welcome as well to get out there and do it.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The 250-300 semi-clincentennial tricentennial committee is putting together a event charrette for May 8th. It'll be here in council chambers. It's open to anyone that is interested in getting involved in the 250-350 or 300 celebration. My gosh, I don't even know the numbers myself. And really for our nonprofit organizations that already conduct events over the course of the year. I haven't sent the flyer out yet, but it's for you to mark this in your calendar. It's from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m., again, here in council chambers on May 8th. The 250 anniversary is about the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. The 300 anniversary is the time at which King George released Concord and seven other communities from the state of Massachusetts, and we became our very own township.
Here, here.
Thank you, Your Honor. Concord Parks and Rec has been working the last six days on a fundraiser for, to complete our order for the Monkey Round Playground. Prices have gone up, and we are raising about $60,000. $27,500 has been raised in the last five days, and I just don't want to see anything taken away from all children, anything accessible for all children in this community. One of the most important things to me, besides being accessible, was the music center station. Many children who might be autistic, who might have needs where that would really enthrall them and give them a learning fun edge, I think that, I said, we can't let this go. So, we're working on this. We have a total of 30 days. If anyone's interested in donating, you can go to the Parks and Rec website. You can donate online, or you can contact David at Parks and Rec and send him a check. There are also three levels. If you want to be a sponsor and be recognized, you can do that, and you can find the information on the website.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Yes, on April 21st, the Energy and Environment Committee, Advisory Committee, is sponsoring an Earth Day community conversation, celebration up at the Heights Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00. Our keynote speaker is Congresswoman Maggie Goodlander, and we will hear from different committees on what the city is doing that is sustainable, and we'll also be issuing an Earth Day challenge to encourage people to, you know, choose from a wide array of things to do that are sustainable in our community, from planting a tree to dropping off clothing into a donation box, to cleaning up trash, planting a garden. There's a lot of opportunities, so I hope folks come there. And May 2nd is In-Town Concord's First Friday. We donated money to that from the arts grant. I will be co-hosting a tree tour with former city planner, landscape architect, Bob Pollak, and at 4:30 on the State House lawn, and then at 5:30, the Women's Club at 44 Pleasant Street is having their annual meeting, and I would highly encourage folks to go. It is a beautiful building, historical, and such a fantastic purpose. So, lots of things to do on Friday.
Thank you. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that there are two events left in the Concord Public Library Concord Reads Program. The book this year was Where You'll Find Me, and I found it a very compelling, nonfiction account of a tragedy in the White Mountains, but really, really interesting. All events are free, but they do require pre-registration. I haven't checked, so I don't know if there's space, but if you did read it or you want to learn more about it, check out the website, which you can find through the city website, concordnewhampshire.gov. I want to wish everyone celebrates this coming Sunday a happy spring, everyone.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of my very favorite events is back downtown. It's the Cars and Coffee on Capitol Street by our good friends at Revelstoke, and if you missed the April event, the next one is May 11th. It's the second Sunday of the month from 8:00 to 11:00, and if you haven't seen it, you have to get down there and check it out. It's very cool to see all of them. It's a great draw from all over the region, all over New England. People are coming to show off their incredible cars, and it's a lot of fun for everybody.
Counselor Fennessy. Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Schlosser, excuse me.
So, I just want to shout out to two Ward 7 residents, Andy Duncan and Laurel Horn. They've volunteered to help spearhead a beautifying event of the South End for Earth Day. So, on April 22nd, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m., volunteers will pick up litter in Rollins Park, Oak Street, and South Street near the schools. So, anybody who's interested is invited to meet at the covered picnic table near the Monarch Way Station, Pollinator Garden in Rollins Park, uphill from the tennis courts. There will be blue bags available, or you can bring your own bucket, bring gloves, rain or shine, come and help beautify the South End. So, April 22nd, Tuesday, 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. Everybody's welcome.
Thank you. Counselor.
I have a lot, so bear with me. I'm just kidding. So, I want to take this opportunity and to recognize Jim Schacher for his tireless work on the committee because I think he takes passion, dedication, and really a leadership to do what he's doing. So, great work. I'm very pleased for everything that you have been putting in this very important work. Thank you. Good luck.
Here, here.
I want to take this opportunity also to thank Park and Rec for putting the gate at the Keach Park, and to the leadership team administrators as well for really such an important work that didn't take me much to do, just sharing what's happening, showing them what is there, and the safety, they prioritize our children's safety, our community's safety. So, thank you. I also want to say thank you to everyone who attended our IFtar dinner. It was such an honor to host all of you guys, and it was a beautiful dinner. So, thank you all. We attended the firefighter celebration to honor our firefighters. It was such a beautiful event, and it was such an honor to be there to celebrate all of them. So, congratulations to all our honorees, and thank you for everything you do every day in our community to keep our community safe. Last but not least, happy Easter and happy Passover to everybody who celebrated. Thank you.
Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always hard to follow my fellow Heights counselor because he says so many wonderful things. I also want to give a shout out to my friends who care about Keach Park. You are not forgotten. You're on our radar. We, I can speak for Ali and I. We appreciate you, and I'm sure everybody does, really. But what I also wanted to say on an official note, April, for you dog family folks, it is time to renew your dog licenses. Kind of weird since they're family members, but it's really important to have. If you have your rabies certificate, when you do apply for the renewal, it's nice if you can include that. Having said that, they're really wonderful in how they track things down. I was in the office today, and there were three dog families there renewing our dogs' licenses, and we appreciate all that the clerk and her office does in that regard. Thank you.
Counselor Foote.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've got a few things here. First order, I want to echo some of the comments about such a special week this is between Easter and Passover, so everyone, happy Easter and Passover greetings. Also, just sidebar, attended the Concord High Hockey, Boys Hockey Championship game a few weeks ago. You know, should be very proud. Dunk Walsh led our city to another state championship, and it was quite a game. It went to four overtimes. I think it was the longest game in NHIA double-A history. More impressive, Counselor Keach was there, and he was wearing his 1979 varsity jacket. So. Did it still fit? It looked good. The arms, the biceps were a bit tight, but other than that, congratulations to him. Also, East Concord lost one of its good guys. I met him a couple of years ago. Doug Finney did so many good things for East Concord and the city. He's a historian. Recently, he was part of the Ebenezer, Ebenezer Eastman Clock Restoration, and that's now operational. Just one of those people, when you meet him for the first time, you know he's the real deal, and he passed away last month, and he's going to be missed, and he is missed in East Concord. So, thank you, Doug, and your family. We really appreciate everything you've done for the city. Lastly, trash cleanup seems to be a theme that we're going through here. So, one of the things that the city manager graciously did last week is trying to organize a cleanup from exit 15 to 13, essentially from Constitution down to common man. So, we're going to have two locations where people can park, and please email me or text me, and we're trying to clean up that corridor, basically along the railroad tracks that you can see from the interstate. Just, it's an hour and a half, Saturday, the 19th, at 8:30. Give me a, please text me. at eight thirty. Give me a, please text me. We need bodies to make this happen. I think we're a little lower than we want to be right now, but we need bodies. If you want to spend some time with Counselor Horn, or Counselor Brown, or Counselor Schlosser, or me, you're welcome to join us. They've committed, and I'm not sure if any others are, but it's one of those things that, you know, it's, people see that when they drive through this community from the interstate. And anything we can do to beautify, I think it's a worthwhile effort, and that's why we're doing it. So please send me a text. Again, I'll say it again. We need bodies. You text me. My information's on the city website.
I repeat the date.
April nineteenth, eight thirty to ten A.M. And whoever shows up, I'll buy you a cup of coffee. But again, Jfoot@clark@nh.gov.
No.
Yes.
And my phone number, six zero three two two five three two five six. Text me. Sure, well, that's going to open up, but it's Easter, so hopefully we're in a good mood. So, thank you. Look forward to some folks helping out. And that's what I have. Thank you.
You, Counselor. I would just like to add to Counselor Foote's comments about Doug Finney. Doug's wife, Angie, worked with me for, at Lincoln and Angelina's predecessor companies for a number of years before she retired and I retired. Doug's father was a noted photographer in the state who did a lot of work with Jump Life America and was an artist, really. And Doug was a warm, generous, community-focused person, the kind of person that we really need more of these days. They were neighbors of mine in Ward Four before they decided to move out to Ward Ten. But other than that, they were great people. They are great people. But I deeply miss them when they moved, because they were, as I said, right around the corner. I saw them all the time. But Doug will be missed. I want to add to the mayor pro tem's comments about the firefighters' recognition. It was a great ceremony, a great night. In particular, you know, I note the members of the Concord firefighting team who were recognized for their role in rescuing the child over on the western side of the state who fell into a crevasse or a crack in a rock. It was an incredibly difficult situation. The temperatures were dropping. There was a great effort to maintain the child's body temperature, while they figured out a solution to what was a very, very difficult problem. And they stepped forward and they excelled at it. And, you know, I think you all should be proud of that work, as well as the day-to-day work that they do in saving lives and protecting us and getting us to the hospital when we need to, which is most of what they do these days. And I do want to thank the mayor pro tem for the invitation to his mosque for Iftar at the end of Ramadan. I think that was the third year I've been there?
Fourth year.
Fourth year, yeah. Thank you. Fourth year. And it's always, it's always very warming. It's a wonderful group of folks who attend the mosque, and it's always good to see friends there. And also, Happy Easter and Happy Passover. Alas, we had to be afflicted with the Ten Commandments again, but other than the overacting in that opus, it's a great holiday. But I hope everyone enjoys the holidays and celebrating their faith. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. All of you, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. We are adjourned.